If I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. We do have a quorum of our board team. That's the first item on our agenda. Our second item, we're honored this evening to have Pastor Bill Harris from St. Luke Methodist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you Pastor Harris.
Bow with me in prayer. Holy God, we gather tonight as a united community with an interest and a heart, a deep concern for all our children. Tonight, as this board meets and as families and children of this community gather to be a part of this time, may those who have been elected to this board, may all of the school administrators, may all of its teachers and faculty, may all of its students and parents across this community be blessed by your guiding spirit, your grace, to deliberate and make decisions that enable all our children to continue the educational path in a positive and productive way, as we ask in your holy name.
Thank you Pastor Harris. We've got four really handsome young men from Santa Rita that are going to come up here and lead us in our pledges. As they come forward, I'll announce their names and have everyone stand. We have Jace Bass, Kayden Cottle, Matthew Collier, and Hudson Rushworm.
(inaudible)
We're excited this evening to have a student showcase also from a number of our students at Santa Rita, from the POPS group, and POPS stands for Power of Positive Students. And their group leaders for the POPS group are Jonathan Ochoa, who's our music teacher at Santa Rita, and also Rick McGee, who's our PE teacher. So I think they're ready. Yeah, why don't you have all the students come by, and we'd like, love to shake their hands. So starting with you, young man, just walk around the semicircle here.
And first up, we have Adam Hickman, and then Matthew, Mr. Derrick, is that Ms. Sarah, followed by Ms. Sammy, Mr. Zach. Next up is Mr. Wyatt, followed by Ms. Lena, Mr. Daniel, Ms. Julie, Mr. Aiden, Ms. Hannah, Mr. Damian, Mr. Elliott, Mr. Josiah.
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking, as a parent, as old as I am, we used to have the big, big old camera that we had to carry, and now everybody gets to film on their phones. How cool is that?
I remember when their, their music teacher, Mr. Ochoa, was their age. So I remember when you were...
That's how old you are.
Yeah, and Jonathan was, was a little, played drums like that when he was that age.
Thank you all so much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll do our welcome now. Good evening and welcome to everyone this evening as president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District. I'd like to welcome all of you to tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome you, those of you who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4, we appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have previously been discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings of this meeting, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, to thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our, of our students and the business of our school district. Our next item on our agenda is item five, which I just referred to, anyone wishing to make public comment to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. I see no one coming forward, so we'll move to item six, the recognition portion of our meeting, and I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Highsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Good evening, and members of the board, Dr. Detloff, good evening to all. It is my great privilege this evening to conduct some well-deserved recognitions. First of all, we have the recognition of the Texas Honor Roll, which is actually a brand-new award in the state of Texas. There have been various honor rolls in place over the years. This is a brand-new one, which represents a partnership between Educational Results and the Institute for Productivity in Education. These business entities have joined forces to create a new award, the New Texas Honor Roll, and we are so very pleased that two SAISD elementary schools were selected for this honor roll. The honor roll itself is part of a national effort to identify higher-performing schools and highlight successful practices that improve outcomes for students. Schools receiving this distinction have demonstrated consistent high levels of student academic achievement, improvement in achievement levels over time, and a reduction in achievement gaps among student populations. The honor roll is comprised of two different awards, Star Schools Awards and Scholar Schools Awards. And our two campuses have been designated as Star School Awards, which means that they have significant populations of economically disadvantaged students who have shown a significant increase in grade level proficiency over time. And this evening, I am very, very pleased to announce that our schools are Glenmore Elementary and McGill Elementary. First, Glenmore Elementary Principal, Cherie Brayden, please come forward. Mr. Steve Gill is Executive Director over Glenmore, and we are so pleased, Ms. Brayden, to recognize your campus, and please congratulate your faculty and staff for us as well. Glenmore Elementary has been named a 2015 Texas Honor Roll School by the Educational Results Partnership and the Institute for Productivity in Education. Congratulations. All right, and now from McGill Elementary, Michael Kolmbach, current principal, and Ricky Black, former principal, this award actually, the recognition comes for the 2015 school year, when Mrs. Black was still principal, and now Mr. Kolmbach has taken the reins of the school. Ms. Black, of course, is still with us at Lee Middle School. So to both Mrs. Black and Mr. Kolmbach, congratulations to McGill on being named a 2015 Texas Honor Roll School by the Educational Results Partnership and Institute for Productivity in Education. Congratulations. We need Ms. Gomez to join this group. Mrs. Gomez is the Executive Director over McGill, and of course, Mr. Gill is the Executive Director over Glenmore. So we'd like to take a couple of pictures, and then I know the board would like to congratulate you on this recognition. Great job, great job, great job. Mr. Lehman, also this evening, we are very pleased and honored to get to recognize our very own Dr. Jeff Bright. Dr. Bright, who is one of our Assistant Superintendents, was recently elected to the Texas Association of School Business Officials, or TASBO, Board of Directors. He was elected by peer members of the organization, and he's going to be serving a three-year term. As a board member of TASBO, Dr. Bright will attend committee meetings as board liaison, attend assigned affiliate meetings across the state, and stay in touch with assigned committees and affiliates during the year. He will be an advocate for the organization and its members, many of whom work a large representation in this very building, and then, of course, across the state as well. Outgoing President Karen Wiseman stated, "It's critical that we continue to develop leaders and encourage qualified board candidates to lend their talent to support TASBO. As an association, we are fortunate to have a talented and dedicated base of members." And Dr. Bright has even provided us a quote, so I'll go ahead and share that. He stated, "It's a humbling honor, and he's looking forward to representing San Angelo SAISD and serving the organization that has given him so much help throughout his career." Just a little information about TASBO. TASBO was founded in 1946 for school business officials in order that they could share ideas and provide advanced educational opportunities for their membership, which now numbers over 6,400. And TASBO is a staunch supporter of the 5.3 million public school students in Texas. Dr. Bright has served with us for the past 13 years. His leadership has guided the district to a solid level of financial strength. Under his direction, SAISD has not missed a year in these 13 years of receiving a superior rating in the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And also, for six consecutive years, since its inception, we have received the State Comptroller's Award, which is now the Platinum Award for Financial Transparency. These just are two of the highlights of the many successes of Dr. Bright's career here in the district. And Dr. Detloff, I know you were wanting to add, congratulations as well.
Absolutely. Well, I've had the good fortune of working side-by-side with Dr. Bright the last seven years, and I would like to tell the audience and group that he is in the who's who in public school finance in Texas. It is a small, select group, but Dr. Bright does a magnificent job. Through organizations such as the Texas School Alliance and TASBO, he certainly has built a network of strong public education finance gurus, and he is considered one of those as well. In every financial accountability piece, he networks with his colleagues, he gathers data, and he runs our financial information by them before he makes recommendations to the Board of Trustees for our school district finances. We are in great shape because of the work that Dr. Bright and his staff has done many, many years. And if you look at peer districts that are our size in the state of Texas, we are financially solvent, and he has done a magnificent job compared to many of those districts. So it's a, just a pleasure and a privilege to work with Dr. Bright, and he offers so much for our district. And because of the financial strength and shape that we're in, we are able to provide academic programming for all of our students and reach those next levels of success. So thank you, Dr. Bright.
Please join me in congratulating Dr. Bright.
You know, that was totally unnecessary. But, you know, credit is given where credit is due. We have a great staff of people here in our district that makes this happen. One person doesn't make this happen. So let me say first to the board, to thank you for allowing all the members of our business administration team, which includes maintenance, transportation, food service, grounds, custodial, information technology, PIMS, the accounting and finance department, HR, these are all members of TASBO, and for you to allow us to attend these trainings is, is a great thing. The investment we're putting in there is going to reap great rewards for our district, and it has, not only in just specific skill sets, but as well as networking and professional advancement in their careers. So we thank you for that. And then second, certainly to Dr. Detloff, who I had to get special permission from him to be allowed to run for the board, and so I certainly appreciate that because I truly, it's an opportunity for me to return some small little piece of me back to the organization that's meant so much to me over the years. So thank all of you.
Thanks, Ms. Highsmith. Yeah, Jeff really doesn't like that. He's really humble, but certainly one of the key cogs in the success of our district, and tells me, makes me remember how long I've been here, if he's been here 13 years. So certainly appreciate all he's done for, all Dr. Bright's done for our district through the years. I know our board team's very appreciative of that, so thanks, Jeff. Our next item on our agenda is item seven, which is our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes? We have a motion from Mr. Dindell, and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve a minutes of our February 8th, 2016 Finance and Pre-Agenda Meeting, and also our February 15th, 2016 Regular Board Meeting. Are there any comments or questions from our board team concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is the report section of our agenda, the 26th Monday of school, which was February 29th. So we're a little bit behind on this as far as for our, our board team. We get an update on a weekly basis in our Friday Facts, but we showed being down, I think, 104 students, but following spring break, we had, we were only down about 40, so we're really excited about some students that have even either moved into the district or that, some that might have come back to us. So that's our enrollment report, and then we also get our, received our four-six weeks' average daily attendance report. Our average daily attendance continues to be above 95%. That's really important. You get paid based on how many kids go to school, how many you have, and how many you attend, and we're over 95% and slightly up compared to this same period last year. So that's a couple of the reports that have been provided to us previously in Friday Facts, and then I think Ms. Hollihan has an update on academic progress for us.
Yes, sir, I do, and I want to introduce to you all, board members, Katie Wiedenhoffer, and actually, she's going to come up and visit a little bit about a couple of programs. One that started about four years ago, Rad Kids, and you might have heard it, about it, but one that just started recently is Rad Women, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about Rad Men. I'm excited to have Katie. She is from Safe Kids San Angelo, is that correct? And I just wanted her to briefly talk about those two programs and the impact it's had on our students in San Angelo ISD.
Hi. Rad Kids, we've been doing this for four years. Very excited about that program. It is creating a cultural change. A lot of our kids, elementary school children, come to school with heavy hearts, and with Rad Kids, you have not only empowered them with knowledge, but you have empowered them with skill. And in today's society, they understand what they need to do in case danger does arise. They know that they need to go to a safe place, and that's where a grown-up is. If someone touches them or grabs them for any reason to cause them harm, they understand what they need to do, and that has been an invaluable, invaluable program. I get compliments, I get thank-yous all the time from the Rad Kids programs, from parents, teachers, and educators, and I'm just one of many educators that I get to stand with at all of those elementary schools. So it's been a blessing to our community, to empower our children. Rad for Women starts off in teenage years, and Rad for Women is going well. We are teaching classes at the freshman campus, Central High School, Lakeview High School. Those programs are running very, very well. We have gotten a lot of positive comments from our teenagers already because I partner with them, and we ask them, "This is something we would like to teach you, would you like to continue?" And they say, "Yes, absolutely." And many times, that opens the door to, "I can use this. Now I know what I can do." Because many of our teenagers do not know what to do, and especially girls, they don't know what to do. They don't know that they have tactical response if they need to use it. And so with Rad for Women, we talk about home safety, we talk about taking away all of the opportunities to become a victim. Rad Systems was founded in 1989. It is the national standard for women's self-defense, and our children, the ones that I have interacted with, and the parents, are very, very grateful, just from the few that we have started now. And we have many parents that want their seniors that are graduating this year to go through this program before they go to college. Rad for Men is the same program, but it's built on different premises. Rad for Men, men against men, tactical response is different. Men fight against men differently. We also cover the perspectives. If we're going out to a restaurant, are we really going there for the food, or is there something else? The perspective on respecting females, respecting what's on television, and teaching males exactly how they need to defend themselves. Because in today's society, if you don't have a role model and you don't have someone teaching you, then our children are expected to get that at school. And because of you and our San Angelo Health Foundation community leaders, and former superintendent, Dr. Carol Ann Bonds, we are able to bring this, these valuable programs to our children, very valuable, because they're life skills and they won't ever forget them. And they're going to remember the coach, or the educator, or the music teacher that taught them skills to get out of a situation in which they were in harm's way. So I really bow to you because I am so grateful, so grateful. I go across the state, I go to Victoria ISD every month, and I will tell you, San Angelo ISD, I'm a graduate from San Angelo Central, so I am very happy to come back and be able to give back to my community, but we are the model, and you are the first school system in Texas to bring rad inside the school to empower your students. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Do you have questions for Katie? She will, she, obviously, she's passionate about this program.
Any questions?
And it is exciting.
Yeah, go ahead. Katie, Amy has a question for you.
Hi. I actually don't have a question, but I have a comment. My, I have two kids that have gone through the program. I have a fifth grader and a kindergartner, and they both loved the program, and my kindergartner came home when she completed it and had her T-shirt and her little bracelet, and was just going on and on and on about how proud she was to be a Rad Kid. So I wanted to thank you personally for bringing that to our kids. It really means a lot to them.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that report. Our next items are consent items, item nine, consent items A through F. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
Move to approve consent items A through F?
We have a motion...
And they say, yes, absolutely. And many times, that opens the door to, I can use this. Now, I know what I can do. Because many of our teenagers do not know what to do, and especially girls, they don't know what to do. They don't know that they have tactical response if they need to use it. And so, with Rad for Women, we talk about home safety. We talk about taking away all of the opportunities to become a victim. Rad Systems was founded in 1989. It is the national standard for women's self-defense. And our children, the ones that I have interacted with, and the parents are very, very grateful, just from the few that we have started now. And we have many parents that want their seniors that are graduating this year to go through this program before they go to college. Rad for Men is the same program, but it's built on different premises. Rad for Men, men against men, tactical response is different. Men fight against men differently. We also cover the perspectives. If we're going out to a restaurant, are we really going there for the food, or is there something else? The perspective on respecting females, respecting what's on television, and teaching males exactly how they need to defend themselves. Because in today's society, if you don't have a role model, and you don't have someone teaching you, then our children are expected to get that at school. And because of you and our San Angelo Health Foundation, community leaders, and former superintendent, Dr. Carol Ann Bonds, we are able to bring this, these valuable programs to our children. Very valuable, because they're life skills, and they won't ever forget them. And they're going to remember the coach, or the educator, or the music teacher that taught them skills to get out of a situation in which they were in arms' way. So, I really bow to you because I am so grateful, so grateful. I go across the state, I go to Victoria ISD every month. And I will tell you, San Angelo ISD, I'm a graduate from San Angelo Central, so I'm very happy to come back and be able to give back to my community. But we are the model, and you are the first school system in Texas to bring rad inside the school, to empower your students. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Do you have questions for Katie? She, obviously, she's passionate about this program.
Any questions?
And it is exciting.
Yeah, go ahead. Katie, Amy has a question for you.
I actually don't have a question, but I have a comment. My, I have two kids that have gone through the program. I have a fifth grader and a kindergartner, and they both loved the program. And my kindergartner came home when she completed it and had her T-shirt and her little bracelet and was just going on and on and on about how proud she was to be a rad kid. So, I wanted to thank you personally for bringing that to our kids. It really means a lot to them.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that report. Our next items are consent items, item nine, consent items A through F. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
Move to approve consent items A through F?
We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our consent items. Consent item As to consider donations. We received a donation from Angelo State, Dr. Miazga, is that how you say doctor's name? I meant to ask you that before we started, Marta. We appreciate his donation, even though I can't say his name. Item Bs, Consider Quarterly Investment Report. Item C is Consider Superintendent's Recommendations for Personnel for School Year 2015-2016. Item D is to consider FFA Local Board Policy. Item E is to consider E-Rate Grant Application for Funding Year 2006-2017. And item F is to ratify the administration's action in sale of properties. This is actually one property that we're selling in conjunction with the city of San Angelo that's delinquent on taxes, which is a good thing. We sell it, and then we, people pay tax. So, those are the items in our consent agendas. Are any comments or questions concerning any of those? I would remind everyone that we've reviewed these just last week at our pre-agenda workshop. If not, any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 10, Consider Our Bill's Accounts and Financial Statements for February 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Archer and a second for Mr. Dindell to approve our bill's accounts and financial statements for the month of February 2016. Are there questions or comments from our board team?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to our viewers that in our board's effort at transparency, we provide all of these reports online, saisd.org. And now, you click on the Transparency tab down kind of in the middle, rather than on the Board tab.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Archer. Other comments or questions concerning our bill's accounts and financial statements? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to Consider Superintendent's Recommendations for Personnel for School Year 2000...
Move for approval.
Oh, thank you. Item 11, Consider Proposed Amendment to the District's Official Budget. This is just moving money around from one function to another, but no change in either revenue or expenditures for the district. So, do we have a motion to approve our amendment to the district's official budget?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Archer and multiple seconds from Mr. Gallegos and Mr. Hernandez. Board questions or comments concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Now, let's try item 12, which is to Consider Superintendent's Recommendations for Personnel for School Year 2016-2017. And Mr. Kimball's going to help us with that. Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. It's our pleasure to announce that Dr. Jana Ritter has been selected to fill the role of Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Ritter is a graduate of Central High School, and she obtained degrees at Texas Tech, Texas A&amp;M, and University of Texas. So, she got most of them all in there. Dr. Ritter is currently an executive, is currently the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction in Georgetown ISD. She's served as an executive director in Georgetown for over six years. Prior to that, she was a principal and campus administrator for 11 years in Conroe ISD, Flugerville ISD, and Leander ISD. Dr. Ritter brings a wealth of experience and knowledge, including TASA Transformational Leadership Fellow, Texas ASCD Regional Affiliate President, and Texas ASCD Curriculum Leadership Academy Ten Fellow. And Dr. Ritter will begin her new role with San Angelo in July.
Thanks, Mr. Kimball. Questions or comments concerning our Superintendent's Recommendations for Personnel for School Year 16-17? Are any, do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our recommendations for personnel for school year 16-17. Any questions or comments from our board team? Public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Item 13 is to Consider Superintendent's Recommendations for 2016-2017. These are all of our staff members who are under an administrative contract. So, Mr. Kimball.
I'll also mention that Dr. Ritter will be here at the April Board Meeting to meet everyone, so that'll be our chance to get to know her. Again, before you are the administrator contracts of the current administrators for the next school year, 2016-17, that we are recommending for your approval.
Okay, thanks. Any questions about those for Matt before we have a motion? Motion to approve?
I'm just going to move to approve.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Parker, a second?
Second.
Mr. Gallegos, we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the Superintendent's Recommendations for our administrator contracts in 16-17 school year. Are there other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Kimball. Our next item is to Consider Bid Number 16003. This is for San Angelo Stadium Parking Lot Lighting, and this is on the, I guess, the east side of the stadium. Mr. Rigdon.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. For many years, there's been a need to add lighting to the San Angelo Stadium parking lot, especially the area on the east side where the athletes park and where they leave their vehicles and went away on out-of-town trips. The Maintenance Department, a couple of months ago, wrote up the specifications and did the drawings for the project. When the quotes came in above the $25,000 threshold, the Purchasing Department put it out for bid. Five vendors were contacted who were either on our trades bid or had expressed an interest in the project already. Only two of the vendors responded. With the help of the Maintenance Director and the Electrical Foreman, the proposals were scored and ranked using our scoring criteria. Jet Electric is the vendor with the lower price and the higher overall score. At this time, the administration is recommending Jet Electric be awarded the contract to install light poles with LED lighting, which is alternate number two, at San Angelo Stadium for the area where our athletes park. The amount for the project is $40,892.
Thank you, Mr. Rigdon. Questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the administration's recommendation for Jet Electric to be awarded this contract to install light poles and LED lighting at the San Angelo Stadium in the amount of $40,892.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Parker. And Mr. Gallegos, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further board comment or questions concerning our lighting?
When are they going to start that, Richard?
I'm not sure, sir.
You don't know? They haven't given you a date?
I have to, no, sir. Contact them tomorrow and get the ball rolling, but I don't know how long it's going to take.
We've just been discussing this for quite a while, and we have a temporary solution that we have in place where we have some lights up there. It's just really important that we, you know, kind of monitor where our students park and make sure that they're safe when they park, and also when they leave their cars behind, that they're also safe. So, something that is, has been important to the board for a number of months, and we appreciate you all working on this and getting this taken care of. Other questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Item 15 is also, Mr. Rigdon's, it's bid number 16-004. This is for a Glenn Middle School addition.
Thank you again. The Capitol Project request this year included construction of a new six-classroom addition at Glenn Middle School. This bid will provide for all the materials and labor to construct a standalone building on the west side of the main building to house six classrooms, student and faculty restrooms, and teacher workroom. We actually received eight very competitive bids on this project. All responses were scored by committee using our scoring criteria. MidTex of Midland was the bidder with the highest score and a proposed cost of $1,754,000. The architect fees, based on that price, are an estimated $167,505. An estimated FFNE is going to be $89,930, which adds up to a total project cost of That does include a $1,000 contingency.
A $100,000.
Sir?
Yeah, I thought I heard a $1,000. It's a $100,000 contingency.
I'm sorry. A $100,000 contingency. My apologies. At this point, the administration recommends entering into negotiations with MidTex of Midland to construct the Glenn Middle School addition. If those negotiations fail to produce a contract, the administration recommends going to the next highest-ranked bidder.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Rigdon. Questions or comments concerning, Mr. Archer?
Just appreciate the competitiveness that you guys generated on this. This is off-the-chart competitive.
Thanks, Mr. Archer. Other comments? I should know this already, but we put aside, we set aside $1,008,000, is that correct? 1.5, okay. So, as we make additional additions or add buildings elsewhere, that'll come in handy for us to understand what construction costs today. But we have significant funds to cover this as part of our fund balance, and then we'll just take the rest of it as, and make an adjustment to our operating budget. Any other questions or comments from our board team concerning the bid? Do we have a motion to approve?
I was just going to comment that this is for Glenn Middle School, which wasn't touched during the '08 bond election. So, and, I mean, and we had the capacity study done, what, three or four?
Three years ago.
Three years ago? And they were already at capacity. So, this is a big improvement for that campus.
Yeah, I think we did restrooms at Glenn, correct? And that's the most recent thing we've done at Glenn. But nothing else has been really done to that campus, other than the previous classroom addition that we made. But to Mr. Gallegos's point, we do have a significant capacity issue there, and anticipate that that'll continue. Other questions or comments from our board team?
I'll make the motion to approve the administration's recommendation in entering negotiations with MidTex of Midland to construct the Glenn Middle School addition, and if negotiations fail to produce a contract, the administration recommends going to the next highest-ranked bidder.
Second.
Thank you all. We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve MidTex of Midland to construct Glenn Middle School addition. The estimated total cost of that project is $2,011,435. That includes FFNE, which is for, you know, those of you who are challenged with acronyms, that's Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, and our architect fees as well. So, the combined cost with the cost, the proposed cost from the bidder is $1,754,000. Other comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. We are going to go into closed session this evening. We're going to do two things, although both fall under personnel. We're only a month behind, which is really good for our board team, to finish the evaluation for Dr. Detloff. We do two evaluations a year. This is the primary one that the state has concern over, and we generally do that in March. So, we're just slightly behind, although it's still March. We usually have it done earlier in March. And then, we might also talk about some additional personnel matters. So, we're going to go into closed session under 551074. Any other, I guess I could handle our announcements and future meeting dates. Our Finance and Board Workshop is scheduled for April 7, excuse me, April 11, and then our Regular Board Meeting's April 18. And there's really, we don't have any other announcements or anything, Marta? Okay. All right, so we're going to go into closed session to do that, and then we'll return. Okay, we are back from our closed session. We went into closed session to discuss personnel, and part of that personnel was to do Dr. Detloff's evaluation. In San Angelo, historically, we've done two evaluations, one in February, March timeframe, and then we do another one August, September timeframe, and kind of allows us to have an opportunity to kind of look back and see, you know, what we accomplished in the, from the previous evaluation, and also gives us some time still to make maybe immediate adjustments in anything that might be, need to happen for the upcoming school year. So, that's kind of the timing around the September, the August, September timeframe. But we didn't make any, take any votes or any official action in closed session, but we do have a motion, I think, coming out of our evaluation of Dr. Detloff.
I'd like to make a motion, but before I make the motion, I want to say that we're very, I think I speak for the board to say we're very happy and very pleased at the start that Dr. Detloff has had with our district and with our board team, that we've been able to continue, and that was our hope, that we would have a good transition after Dr. Bonds, that we'd be able to have a good transition with our, with Dr. Detloff, and everything would continue well with his administrative team. And I think where most boards strive to have a team of eight, we probably have a team of 10 or 15, and we're very fortunate that we, that we have that, and that has continued. With that said, our procedure had been with Dr. Bonds, that after evaluations, if everything went well, that we would extend a contract and talk about an increase. And that's what I want to make a motion on, that we extend Dr. Detloff's contract for one year, and that we give him an increase in pay that would be commensurate with any increases that we give to other administrators whenever we discuss that, which is usually, I guess, in the, in the summer. So, with that said, that's my motion.
Second.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Parker. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion concerning that, comments? I would just reiterate what Max said, is, you know, we're, it's really pretty amazing that everything, and, you know, the administrative team probably wouldn't, there's been things that have happened that, that were new experiences, and I think everybody has a new experience almost every year. Something new happens that we have to learn to deal with, but we're really shocked and pleasantly pleased by how the transition has taken place. And we're, I know that doesn't, that isn't just a compliment to Dr. Detloff, that's a compliment to all of our administrative team. So, we appreciate all of our administrators, and I think that moving forward, there's a lot of things that are really promising for SAISD, and as a board member, that's a challenge to our team, but also really encouraging. So, we appreciate where we are today and look forward to continuing to build upon our current success. Other comments or questions? If not, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We've already covered our upcoming board meetings in April. I don't think we have anything else, so here, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.